Okay. Welcome, everyone, to Spanish Fork City Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Our, we'd like to excuse our Chair, Commissioner Mitchell, tonight, and we have not elected a new Vice Chair yet, so we, we did rock, paper, scissors, and I lost. That's not true, but we talked about it, and I'm gonna conduct tonight, and I'll hope that my friends over here to my left will help with details, words, and terms that I drop. All right, we'd like to excuse Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner Clayson, and Commissioner Woodhouse, and Commissioner Carroll will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We began this evening with a work session at the Spanish Fork Fit City Rec Center. We got to go walk through, and wow, that's gonna be such a wonderful, wonderful addition to our city. Thank you so much to all the city council and city staff that is making that happen, and thank you so much to our citizens who will contribute and participate. What a blessing. Okay. Item number three is approving the minutes for, from May 7th. I would entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from May 7th, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passes. I'd like to note that we, with three of us here, we do constitute a quorum, but every vote must be unanimous for it to pass tonight. All right. Number four is a zone change in preliminary plat. It's a public hearing with these items. The first one is Larson Ranch.
Just a quick correction there. It's not, there's no plating with this one. It's just gonna be a zone change.
Okay.
Just as an FYI. And it looks like the recorder's working. Sweet. Okay. So this property is located at approximately 1273 South and 2000 West, and it contains roughly 9.32 acres. If you go to the next side, the property is currently zoned R130, which is single-family residential with a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet, and it has a general plan designation of medium-density residential. The applicant has applied for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning of the property to RR Rural Residential. So here's a letter of support that they provided. If you go back two slides to the zoning, it might be just easier. Yeah, we can do it like that. As you can see, a majority of the surrounding zoning to this property are zoned RR Rural Residential already, and then to the south is unincorporated Utah County. This property was recently approved as an agricultural protection area as well, the Larson Agricultural Protection Area. And to the city's knowledge, this property has been used agriculturally for years, so it meshes with the RR Zone. There is an existing home on the property. It's located right there. This is a separate, a separate parcel. It's not included in the zone change, so this will remain R130, but this home will be included in the RR Rural Residential Zone Change. The minimum lot size for RR Rural Residential is five acres. This is over nine acres, so it meets the minimum. One quick note is just that the minimum front setback in the R130 zone is 40 feet, and this home actually has less than 30 feet of frontage, so it's already non-conforming as it currently exists. The minimum front setback for, setback for the RR Zone is 50 feet, so it will just remain non-conforming. So nothing really changes there. But the DRC recommended approval of the Larson Ranch Zone Change based on the findings in the staff report.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, the Ag Protection Zone that, or area, what's it called? Agriculture Protection Area?
Agricultural Protection Area, yeah.
Is that completely in the same sound?
It also incorporates, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but it goes roughly this way, and then it kind of meanders down and follows back up and goes like that.
Okay.
Believe that's the rough outline of it.
It does not include the corner property that's the, that would remain one, R130?
It does include it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then why, the question is, why are they not included? Is it two separate owners and they?
It's two separate owners, yeah, and their parcels not on the application.
Okay.
If I could maybe just add to that response relative to that other property there, I think we'd be somewhat reluctant to make a home by way of the lot size non-conforming that likely would have some, some impact on that homeowner's ability to do certain things, do an addition, and even maybe some remodeling at some point and the like, if it were non-conforming in that way, so we'd have some struggles if that home were included, I guess.
Great. Oh, thank you. If we don't have any other questions, do we have an applicant that could, would like to come speak with us?
Hello. So my name is Jackie Larson. I am the applicant, and I'm the daughter-in-law of Gary and Susan Larson, who owned that property. So we're just respectfully requesting that your recommendation to rezone our family's property from R130 back to rural residential. So our intent is not to increase the density or develop, but simply to restore appropriate zoning for continued agricultural use. The current R130 zoning is incompatible with that purpose, and the rural residential zoning reflects what this land is, which is a working farm that's been in operation for generations. So the zone change to RR does a few things. It aligns the zoning with permitted agricultural uses, including irrigation, raising animals and livestock, and crop production, which are increasingly restricted under the R130. So it also protects our property rights and agricultural viability while minimizing finesse conflicts in the future. So the home was actually built by our family in 1905, and on the property we have the equipment shop, livestock pens, farmer's training and equipment, and irrigated crop fields that we continue to produce, develop, and periodically rotate crops. So the land was actually patented by my family in 1881, and in 2019, it was recognized by the state of Utah as a century farm and ranch extension, which honors over 100 years of continuous family ownership and agricultural operation. So as was mentioned, the parcel is also part of the 41.7 acre Larson Ag Protect area designation that the county, the city council approved just a few months back. So we are also contiguous on the west and the south, so, all right. Which one's the pointer?
It's the black.
This one? So the other Ag Protection Area, which is all of this, and continues all through over here. So that's the Leland Ag Protection that we're contiguous to on the, or the south and west. That Ag Protection Area is also contiguous to the Money Ag Protection Area, which is more than 6,000 acres, so we're just kind of the bottom end of it. So our legacy, though, is not just symbolic. It reflects a deep generational commitment to stewardship, stewarding the land, and conserving water, and producing high-quality crops, and serves our local economy. So our farm not only supports our own family and operation, but the multiplier effect also drives broader local economic growth. Utah County, I don't know if you guys might know this, but, so Utah County actually ranks second in the state for market value, and Hare ranks first by commodity and acreage. So much of that stays in Utah, feeding the animals and products, and produces our local milk, meat, and eggs. So this land and area in particular is actually some of the best-producing yield per acre in the state of Utah. I mean, you get more off of one acre here than you do anywhere else. So that's due to the climate, water access, soil type, and irrigation and drainage infrastructure. So it's economically and functionally irreplaceable. Couple other things, okay. With, that's my brother-in-law's house that's south, my sister-in-law, my brother-in-law's house. So the zoning was changed in 2018 from RR to R130 to create the lot for my sister to build a home on, and based on staff guidance, the entire 10.77 acre parcel was rezoned rather than only that one parcel down the bottom. So we installed a 16, little, over 1,600-foot off-site eight-inch culinary water line along 2000 West, and in 2021, after the preliminary plat approval, staff later required a road dedication of 6,500 square feet of a road right away along 1,700 West, so the right side of that. So we've complied with those requirements in good faith, and we've included those agreements with our application tonight to ensure it's clear what we've already contributed. So I just did this kind of proactively to, so there's no misunderstanding or unexpected conditions that might be added later to our request. So our intent now is simply to restore the appropriate zoning for the remaining ag land and not to open the door for us to develop or have any other offset application, or obligations. So that's all we have. Do you have questions?
Yeah, a question, so you say the culinary line that's connecting to the city's infrastructure?
Yep, so it goes from, like, the top of the hill there, so clear down there, comes all the way down to their home.
And I assume the rest of the city services are there as well?
So we, actually, our stormwater goes to Benjamin Drainage District, so we pay that too. Our power is SESD. We are on culinary, we do have wells too, so the wells we use for our livestock. And our irrigation is with Spanish Fork South Irrigation Company, so that's not city water, it's city secondary water, anything that's separate from that. So we do have cable.
SFCN?
We do have FCN, SFCN. Garbage with the city. I think that's about it.
And that is the corner. I think that's actually the, the city's boundary right there.
Yes, we have a boundary. I think we've been the boundary since, like, 1990, 91, and when we annexed, so we were, like, a big portion of the Leland annexation back then. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, any thoughts or discuss?
We can open a public hearing?
Oh, that's right. Public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to come and speak, you have three minutes, and make sure to state your name.
Okay, my name's Janice Harris, and I'm the neighbor to the Larsons, and so I came because we received this letter about the meeting tonight, and we, we want everyone to know on the records that we are for the Larsons. We love what they do. My in-laws and their ancestors, they've been farming for a long time, too. But we have the parcel of land above that that is in a family trust, and we're looking that we need for needs of my sisters more than we need, but to, we need to sell it and develop the land. So the only question that I have is such as the, I noticed that Mr. Anderson, he was aware of some things that we wouldn't be aware of, like, for, in the benefit of the Larsons, like, maybe if they needed to remodel. I thought that was nice you brought that up. I do not know all of the, the rules on the books, so I just want to make sure that if this is changed to a different zoning, will that affect our opportunity to develop our parcel that butts up next to theirs? Did you need me to kind of show you where ours is, or do you know?
Is this, is it right here?
Uh-huh, and then the little piece above it. So it's like 23 acres, yep. Not the green, the light green, yep. So it's kind of like an L shape, the way you're looking at it, yep. So that's our only concern, is that we want to be able to have the right that we need as the owners of that land to be able to, that's the only thing. I'm just bringing to the attention of the, of the planning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. All right, anyone else? All right, then we'll close our public hearing, then we'll have.
I guess I just didn't wait for an answer. So is there gonna be a problem with if it's changed to the, the RR zoning? Because we're not worried about it. We love that they farm.
Right. But, yeah, after we close public hearing and then we have discussion about it?
And then you talk.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Any discussion, any comments from staff about that question from Janice Harris?
I'll take a stab at it, let my colleagues here jump in on what maybe I miss. And I'll put it this way. Properties develop in Spanish Fork, or at least they have on a very regular basis for a really long time, that are adjacent to properties that are zoned the way this property is proposed to be zoned, rural residential. And I'm not aware of anything from a zoning perspective or a development standard kind of perspective that would make it necessarily any more difficult to develop because you're adjacent to rural residential zoning. If anything, and it's not if anything, but there would be now some additional criteria that would come into play by way of notice that would be provided to future property owners in development, and that type of thing with the subject property being in an Ag Protection Area. But, help me out, am I missing anything, just zoning, development-wise? Really non-consequential, I'd, I'd say.
So I know you're not deep diving on specifics there, but the Ag Protection Area is probably of more consequence than, than a different zone?
Offside, I think, yep.
Right.
And even that, I don't think is necessarily the hindrance.
Right. Yes, and, and their development goes up around rural areas all the time, and they coexist very nicely. And when, the Larsons have been really smart to have an Ag Protection Area so that, that the development that goes on around it coexists even, is even more friendly, and everyone can get along better there, so.
And we're okay with that.
Yeah. Great. Okay. All right. We need to take a vote, yes, or what?
If you haven't.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess I'll just comment, the Larson family has plans for what they're doing there. This aligns with their plans. It doesn't feel much different than what we'd see from other development. It seems pretty straightforward.
It does, it does to me, too.
Madam Chair, would you take a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
Okay. I move to recommend a zone change for the Larson Ranch from R130 to RR Rural Residential.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second, Beth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that, that motion passes. Great for the Larsons. Thank you so much for coming. All right. Our next item is the Maple Mountain Plat N Zone Change. And then, do you do B and C together, or will we talk about those separately?
We can discuss them together, whole public hearings together, but then separate motions.
Okay.
And then we do have separate findings for each specific motion. Unfortunately, we do not have the applicant here tonight. They are encouraged and invited to attend, so I apologize that we don't have somebody here to answer questions if you have some for the applicant. Excuse me, so the two items that we're looking at together, one is a reapproval of a preliminary plat that was last approved in, in 28, or, excuse me, yes, 2018. And then we have a zone change to apply the master plan development overlay to the property. If we go to the next slide, this is showing the current conditions of the property. This cul-de-sac here was phase one of Plat N, which is part of a larger development. Let's go to the next slide. This is 400 North, showing current conditions. Let's go to the next slide. So the subject property we're looking at comes up like this, centered there on the dot. This is the general plan designation of low-density residential. This slide is showing the existing RR112 zoning, which is this yellow base zoning, and then the crosshatching is the application of the master plan development overlay. Most recently, we had the Mellor subdivision, which is this piece to the east, that was approved as a master plan development. So the biggest need for the MPD overlay is when this was approved in 2018, the master plan development was a subdivision option that the applicant could choose. Since then, it's been modified, text changed, to now apply it as an overlay zone when they wish to do an alternative to a standard subdivision. With this overlay, what's interesting is we have these very similar layout, let's go to the next slide, to what was approved in 2018. What they are doing on top of that now is we have updated the master plan development overlay to require uniform street trees. We do have some architectural standards that the builder would need to follow at the time of building permit as far as types of materials and different plans, so we don't have uniform plans on every single lot. So what you can see is a couple of great street connections would be made between 130 North, 400 North, over to the Mellor subdivision on 320 North, and then back to the west with the existing neighborhood. Let's go to the next slide, please. This is just showing the improvements that would be done on 400 North, and then the start of the street tree plantings through the development. Let's go to the next slide. This is just showing the remainder of the, the street trees. Let's go to the next slide. So these next two slides we have, one is, is for the zoning map amendment. So staff reviewed this with the Development Review Committee. Both of these items are recommended for approval. On the preliminary plat, you would be acting as a legislative body, and then as, I believe that's correct? Or have we changed that? I'm trying to remember if we've taken both.
City Council.
Okay, both recommendations, sorry to cause it any confusion. So back to the zoning. Once again, the request is to apply the overlay. The need for that is roughly half of the lots are below the 12,000-square-foot standard, and half of them are above it. So the average, which the MPD allows you to do, ends up being 12,355 square feet. And then once again, 16 of the 33, so just under half of the lots, fall below the standard width of 100. Most of those are within the range of 80 feet to 100 feet wide, so still very adequate in, in width. Our, our lot sizes, the smallest ones, if we go back a few slides, please, right here. So the smallest ones right here are 8,800 square feet, and then the largest one is over 17,000 square feet. With the staff report, we did provide you the findings. We feel that this is an appropriate application of the master plan development overlay. And so, as I previously noted, the, the recommendation, one for the staff report is based off of the four findings, and then the recommendation for the preliminary plat is based off of findings and conditions, which include ultimately the city council approving the application of the overlay zone. Questions for staff at this time?
Actually, I should have said this before we started this. I need to disclose for the public record that I am a member of the Nevo School District Board of Education, and the adjoining lot, or the lot that is right next to it, is owned by Nevo School District. I don't see that there is a conflict of interest. There's no involvement with this property or development by the Nevo School District, so I will not recuse myself, but I will disclose.
Thank you.
Questions? Yes, I have questions. Does, does anybody else have questions?
I have some, but you go.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Number one, I am wondering, I, I guess, maybe I have comments, but why would they put these lots that seem like they could be, you could make these into 12,000-square-foot lots? I can see how the, things get awkward when you're going around a cul-de-sac, but when you're going on a straight road right there and you're trying to conform, 8, 8,800 square feet's a lot different than 12,000 square feet. So I'm wondering why they thought that would be a good, a good idea here? What are the square feet of these three down here? And, and these, and these ones that are right here?
I don't want to speculate on the applicant's behalf. I do recall in 2018 that one of the concerns with why they held off on this last phase is there are some expensive improvements with the irrigation ditch that's being piped here. I guess my response to your question as far as the lot sizes, for the average person driving down the street, I don't know that they're going to notice an immediate difference. Some of the 12,000-square-foot lots also have less than 100 feet, and so I think you're gonna see similar-type product. That's just my opinion. But unfortunately, I, I, we don't have the applicant here, so I can't have them speak to whether it's just number of lots that they were trying to offset costs, or if it was to provide a variety of lots, I don't know.
And then, could you tell me what, tell us what the square, the square feet of these three are?
Josh, you're gonna need to pull up the plans in Citizen Service. I think.
Might take just a sec.
I emailed them to you this morning. Did that come through?
Yeah, and I was tending grandchildren and didn't get a chance to.
I'll give Josh just a second.
I guess my other question is, we, if you look back to the map, where we can see the lot line, I mean, the property lines, yeah. Oh, go back, yes, this one. So we've had residents from over here talk about how this, this property is higher, there's a drainage, they're putting, it's putting them down into a bowl. Do we know what these two are doing to mitigate the water problem with, the water concerns for these, for these residents? The impact? Do you remember our conversation?
Not specifically, but what engineering?
So we've asked them, I think it'll change once the houses are built, but in the meantime, they're supposed to be burming up around those lots so that any drainage that comes into that area stays on the lots and doesn't go to adjacent properties.
Okay. Commissioners, anybody else have questions for?
The, the road improvements that are gonna be north on 400 North, do we have a slide that has that? I just kind of wanted to.
No, but we can pull that out of the plans. If you're in Citizen Service, they're the UDOT plans. So first, let's answer this question, scroll down. If you can zoom in right there.
59 is just over 12,000 square feet. 58 is 10,486, and 57 is 10,326.
Which they look very similar to these, maybe even larger than those two. So in Citizen Service, there's a recent plan called UDOT. So this shows the improvements, if you zoom in on this one. You can see there'll be a turn lane. If you scroll to the next page, I think there's some more striping, yeah. My understanding, Josh, is these have been approved by UDOT?
Yeah, correct. So just striping.
I see what you are looking for.
Yeah, so the, the turn lane improvement, the road's gonna parallel. What we see right there is, it will, there'll be, is there gonna be a four-way right there with the road that's north? I guess that's kind of hard to see from this view, right? Not necessarily a four-way stop, but there will be an intersection that will have. Yeah, okay, there, there's what they're looking for, okay.
So this is the south side of the road, continuation of the trail, curbed gutter, turn lanes. Obviously, stop bar on the north and south traffic, but continuous flow on the 400 North.
Okay.
I hadn't noticed before that's, that continues straight into Slant Road there. So it's already an existing intersection that'll come straight through. It's not adding.
It's adding a fourth leg to the existing T intersection.
But there will be no traffic lights or anything like that?
Not, no, not right now.
No, we have an access management plan that we'll look at 400 North in the future, but I don't know off the top of my head what improvements they anticipate here.
And obviously, this is a UDOT road. I assume these improvements are, are they by the applicant? Or who takes care of these improvements?
So these would be completed by the applicant.
By that, right. They'll go in with the development.
Yeah, or a company that the applicant hires.
Yeah, and I think right up to this point, there's the edge of that trail, right? So that will continue on just to the edge. So that will continue on just to the edge of this development.
Right, and the Mellor subdivision to the east, they put in their trail and improvements, so it'll tie into that.
Get it that much closer to Spanish Ford Parkway.
Great. Okay, any other questions?
Commissioner Warnock?
Yes.
I, I wanna go back to the question. I really do appreciate the way that Brandon did not wanna speculate on the part of the applicant about why lots forty-one through forty-four are the sizes that they are. I guess I am maybe more willing to do that because typically, we see projects that have the most lots that our code potentially would allow, period. So I think oftentimes, it's a matter of a design consultant understanding your ordinance and what can fit within the parameters of the ordinance. And generally speaking, they don't leave something on the table. They, they do maximize things from a design perspective in terms of what's permitted versus maybe being, um, more eager to design lots for projects that are in the R-one-twelve zone that are twelve thousand square feet, when there's this other mechanism that lets them potentially do otherwise. So, um, I don't think it's, it's by accident that the project ultimately has the number of lots that it does, and, um, lots of that size are partly how they, they get there.
Okay. I, uh, I'm really disappointed that the applicant is not here, and this is not something that I will vote for tonight. I, uh, and so would it be better for us to vote and for it to not, uh, to go to the city council saying we don't recommend it? Or would it be better to, uh, continue, to move to continue this to next month?
I th- um, if you want to have a discussion with the applicant, then it's most appropriate, in my opinion, to continue it. If you, um, uh, don't feel inclined to support the proposal, then it may be best just to recommend that it be denied, or to not support a motion that it be approved. And in that case, it'd go to the city council that way, so. Um, and you might look at it a lot of other ways as well, but those are maybe two potential ways to look at it.
What are, what are your thoughts, Commissioner?
Well, I would be curious why you wouldn't support it at this point.
Because I, I understand about average lot sizes and such, but I think with more than half, or almost half, of the lots not coming close to the R-one-twelve, when this is, uh, I, we've approved several th- over the years that I've been here, where there've been a few of the entire thing, so master plan development. A few are underneath the twelve thousand square feet, and I understand wanting to maximize that average. But, um, I don't know, I just feel like, especially that, um, the section where they're closer to nine thousand square feet, or just undersqur- I, that just feels like it ought to, in good faith, be a little, like, in the spirit of the, what our zoning is there, ought to be closer to twelve thousand square feet, so that's why.
I, and I think that is your prerogative, to look at a master plan development proposal and to feel as though, you know, potentially, uh, the density is more maybe than what the site should accommodate, for whatever reason. Uh, I don't believe that just because the ordinance allows, uh, for developer to get a certain number of lots as they meet the, uh, the average lot size requirement, which that really is, is what sets the threshold, um, that somebody's entitled to have the overlay approved with that number of homes. Vaughn, I don't know if you wanna share any thoughts there, but-
My thoughts were that if you're inclined not to recommend approval, then maybe you base that on some of the findings that are in the MPD overlay. Ordinance, so that it's grounded in something that's objective and not subjective.
And I'd still be curious. Would you have a public comment for this one? I'd be curious to see if there's any comments.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, uh, should we go into public hearing? All, do you have any thoughts before that? All right, let's go into public hearing for item B and item C. Anyone like to come?
Can I just make a comment?
Comment? Yep. You have three minutes. Come in.
My name's Janice Harris-Wenskin. I do not have any connection with this property, but I just wanted to share from a perspective of someone that has looked at their land and trying to do it. When we first were trying to develop our land, we were trying to do seventy-five larger, um, lots, but then with the cost of things coming into it, and when they said that the improvements are from the one that, the owner of the, or the, the project, instead of UDOT, I can see where the price can get. So we're to the point where maybe to make things work, to pay everyone, engineers, the utilities, everything coming in, we had had an estimate around three million for ours, and so we had to ju- adjust. So I'm just saying, speaking from the background of my experience, that maybe that's why they aren't conforming to all twelve, um, that number that they need for the lots. But just out of, just being a concerned citizen, just wanted to share that perspective, that there are a lot of costs that come involved, and sometimes our, our desire is matched with, or have to adjust with the cost.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll close public hearing. All right, any further discussion? This isn't, I, uh, I would really, I would prefer to continue this items until we can have a conversation with the, with the applicant. But that's just me. What about you? What about the two of you?
Yeah, it's nice to have a discussion with the applicant. I don't know that I've got the same concerns that you have, but I think it's good to voice, or, or to at least talk through those, those issues there. The, the thing that I'm, I'm looking at, and, and maybe staff has a sense here, it looks like we're pretty similar to the rest of the subdivision in terms of sizes and everything like that. Is that, is that accurate?
We had a discussion about that in the development review committee meeting, and that's, and you can kinda spot check around, but certainly in some areas, that's the case.
I too don't have the same concerns, um, and then also just curious if we do meet with the applicant, would, would they be able to s-
Satisfy my concerns?
Yes.
Uh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that they would satisfy my concerns, but there, this is something, like, if I'm gonna vote against it, then that means it won't pass. Where having a conversation with the applicant, giving the applicant to have a conversation, and then the re- the other three commissioners, um, would have a, have a chance to vote too, and then it might pass if they're, if they're here. So Vaughn, does that?
It might be helpful to think of it in the terms, you're making a recommendation. So you're making either a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation, or like you mentioned, you could vote to continue it, to have a further discussion. So, um, you could move to make a negative recommendation, and then it would still progress on its administrative path towards the city council. But continuing it obviously keeps the matter here in this body. Um, but either a positive or negative recommendation would move it forward.
Okay. Well, does anybody have a motion? I would entertain a motion.
Make sure I get this right. Well, I'm- This is an interesting thing, right?
Yeah, you can, you can move however you want.
Yeah.
We'll vote however we wanna vote.
And we can vote exactly how we wanna vote, right?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So I'm going to move that we, well, and let me understand here, is it the plat, the plat change is what we're doing, and also the zoning change?
So we have two separate motions.
Two separate motions.
Two separate.
Law amendment first, and then a separate motion for the preliminary plat.
Okay.
So the first one is to move from a straight R-one-twelve zoning to an R-one-twelve with the master plan development overlay.
Okay. I'm gonna move that we approve changing the zoning on property from R-one-twelve to R-one-twelve with the master plan development overlay, to allow for the single residential development at twenty-one hundred east and thir- one thirty north.
Second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Okay, so that is, uh, that doesn't pass.
Right, so that's where I was getting at with my comment about recommendation. So it didn't pass, so it's still in this body. Does that make sense? If you made a motion for a positive recommendation and it didn't pass, then it would, you know, or you can make a motion for a negative recommendation, and if that passed, then it, either way, it's gotta be positive or negative. It needs to move forward with unanimous vote, so it's, can't go to the street.
Oh, so if it doesn't pass here, it doesn't go to the city council?
I mean, it's not a recommendation. I don't think you made a recommendation that passed.
Okay.
Positive or negative.
Okay.
Do you guys see that differently?
I guess I'm confused. I would take it as a negative recommendation.
That's what I thought. That, 'cause we've done that before.
I understand.
We've done that before.
The two votes were in favor, one against. There's not-
But based on the rules of, of quorum size and everything like that.
I think that's why it's always helpful to move to make a recommendation, positive or negative, and that be the motion, and whether it passes or not.
So you're, so the motion should be-
To recommend.
To recommend.
Recommend approval, or make a positive recommendation.
I think that, I thought that was-
That was the recommendation we made.
So, yeah, we, we left out recommend in the motion.
Okay. That explains it then.
Okay, so if you, could we restate the motion with recommend?
I thi- I think that was implied, I guess. I mean, he said move to approve or move. So you're saying, then, you guys think that-
It'll still move forward to city council.
The motion, in order to have, this is how I look at it, and I think it's how you're describing it actually. Um, in order to take some affirmative action, it has to be unanimous. And in light of not having affirmative action, and we've kinda taken it as if the planning commission did not make a recommendation to approve it.
That's what I'm saying.
And we mo- but we do move forward to the city council.
I wouldn't. I would say there wasn't a motion that carried, so it stays here.
Um, if we, here's, here's the concern I have with that. Potentially, this becomes a spin cycle, if that makes sense.
So it might be better to, uh-
That's why I said to make some sort of recommendation that you can unanimously support, that moves it forward on its path.
So what we just did-
Even if it's a negative, or, you know.
Right, and I think that what we just did does move it forward on its path. It goes to the city council, but it was not, uh, but the recommendation didn't pass. The recommendation for approval did not pass.
I think the intent I had was for it to move forward on its path. I don't think, that is the intent.
If I understand, so to, to try to state, to see if I'm right, I think our legal counsel's opinion is that if it's not unanimous, it stays with you.
Yeah, nothing passed.
So it's effectively a continuance.
Effectively continuance.
And then we, uh, next meeting, would that be picking up where we left off? With an opportunity for a new vote?
Right, that's what I think.
No new public hearing necessarily, or any of that, but, so.
I think, but-
So it, so it'd be better to do a continuance because we want to have a conversation? Because if it doesn't pass, then it goes off the docket. If it's continued, then we are willing to have a conversation with the-
I'm hearing a little differently.
Okay.
That, I'm hearing that, based on that motion, and I'm, again, I'm just saying this partly to try to make sure I understand, that without a unanimous, uh, vote on the motion, that's akin to a continuance, almost by default.
Yeah, I, I would maybe, if, for clarity, I would move to make another motion, move to continue, and see if you can get that one unanimously to pass.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'll move that we continue, uh, uh, with a discussion, uh, the, to involve the zone change of the property from R-one-twelve to R-twelve with the master plan development overlay.
May I add that we invite the applicant, that staff invites the applicant into that motion as well?
Yeah, that we invite the applicant to-
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, the motion to continue passes unanimously. Let's see. I just said that wrong. Okay. Then does that, do we need to address C also? Okay, so I will entertain a motion for the, uh, proposal reapproving the preliminary plat for the master plan development. Is that correct? Okay.
I'm just waiting to see if it's, uh, approval or continuance.
I'll entertain a motion for number C, for letter C.
I move that we continue the Maple Mountain, um, proposal for the preliminary plat and invite the applicant, uh, for further discussion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. That passes. The continuance passes. Okay. All right, thanks, everyone. All right, now we ha- moving on to number five, conditional use permit. This also has a public hearing. Ace Rents Landscape Yards.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. I, I suspect we now have the applicant's for this item's full attention relative to what's on the line and how a vote needs to go. Um, I've appreciated the education that I've gotten here the last little bit. Um, and let me start with, uh, just a little bit of background. We were approached last fall by the applicants here to potentially come up with a way to let them use the subject property. It's, uh, just off Main Street down south, um, off of Arrowhead Trail, just south of the new rec center, on the other side of the river, about eleven and a half acres there, that, uh, uh, for the most part today is vacant. There is an existing business on the subject property, Ace Rents, and that becomes a pretty important fact as we, um, present this proposed conditional use tonight. Let me mention as well, you know, again, we've been talking about this for quite a while. The applicants were quite patient, I think ultimately with me, to try to figure out, um, at least the most functional way, in my mind, as to how to present the use that they wanted the city to contemplate, how to, you know, potentially have it best fit into our zoning provisions and the different opportunities that, uh, that we have to, to consider. Um, a use like this, we talked about a number of different things, potentially changing the zoning map to a zone that might really clearly allow what they wanna do. We talked about potentially changing the text of maybe the existing zone, the commercial two zone, to allow for, um, maybe a, a slightly, uh, differently defined use from what we'll talk about tonight. And I really appreciate that ultimately we settled on what, um, because I'm a proponent of what the applicants would like to do here, what seems to me like it might be the easiest path to getting them to where they can do what they wanna do. Um, so what do they wanna do? Ultimately, I'd describe it just how I feel like it fits into our zoning code. They want to do the outdoor display and storage of materials and merchandise in conjunction with the permitted use on the subject property, which is Ace Rents. Um, so in this case, um, the outdoor display and so forth, that's a conditional use. And to talk about that for just a second, um, conditional uses are different from permitted uses in that permitted uses are things that people can do, we say by right sometimes. You're entitled ultimately to be able to, to do certain things that are permitted, provided that you meet, uh, basic standards that are found in city codes and requirements. You meet those, and you can, uh, operate a permitted use. Conditional uses are really not that different from permitted uses. And the, the conditional part really just describes what the city's land use authority, and land use authority is, is the body that approves conditional uses, which is the planning commission, so in this case, we won't use the word recommend. This is one of those times when the buck stops with the commission. We won't use the word recommend, this is one of those times when the buck stops with the commission, you make the decision. And, uh, to go back to what conditional refers to, with. Conditional uses, there are still standards that have to be met before people can, uh, can do those things. But also, you as the land use authority, you have some latitude to impose specific conditions that have to be met. In order for somebody to be able to, to have a conditional use approved. Um, those conditions that you impose upon a use, those really need to be. There for the purpose of mitigating any reasonably foreseeable detrimental impact that might exist. If you don't impose those conditions. So, over the years, we've seen things like, um, a condition that. Maybe lighting along a property line be shielded in such a way that it doesn't adversely impact neighboring homes. Or maybe that a certain type of paving surface be used, um, to keep dust down, or hours of operation sometimes. More restrictive hours of operation, um, uh, just various things like that, that. Are the result of recognizing some potential impact that could be had, that could, could be harmful to surrounding neighborhood or properties. And coming up with appropriate conditions to deal with those things. Does that make sense? Appreciate that, um, so in this case, the applicants. Are proposing to take a significant part of the subject property and to. I struggle with this, with some, Mr. Wagstaff, can you help me out here? There we go, incidentally, the previous image was the zoning. This is the general plan, the blue subject property is designated mixed use, this is a good one to look at. Um, by way of the, uh, the business. Is located. Once again, struggle with that, I'll go here, this is Ace Rents. And the, the storage area, storage and display. Of, uh, things like landscape rock, assume maybe like some, maybe rock mulch as well as other things like that. It'll happen here, um, and incidentally, I'll turn things over to the applicants in just a second, they know what they wanna do better than I do. Um, it would happen in this area here, back to some things that would be required in our code. For this use, they would have to do a masonry wall where the subject property abuts these dwellings here, the residential use. Would require some improvements along their, their frontage over here, which gets to be a little bit odd. Because they don't own what would seem to be all of the frontage. U dot owns this parcel here, so as you look at the, the layout that they've put together with their improvements. It follows this line here, rather than, uh, the, um. The sidewalk and so forth along U dot's road there. So that's a little bit different, but as proposed, the applicants are proposing to meet the city's requirements. For landscaping, um, in various ways, and to do some other things to address what we would expect. Uh, maybe some impacts to be, um, all proposed with the idea. That, at least this is our understanding as staff, I think it's pretty logical that long term. We don't really expect this use to exist. Might be two years, might be five, might be ten, but just given the nature of this location. Um, and how oftentimes locations like this, you know, really can house, um, uses that. Rely on and take advantage of kinda the geography of being at a junction of roads like that and so forth. We'd expect, um, the property at some point in the future to warrant, maybe something more substantial, something would have more permanence, et cetera. Um, so, part of, I think, uh, again, I'll just speak for myself, part of my willingness. In recommending that this be approved really is tied to the idea that, um. Currently, the site really doesn't serve a beneficial purpose for anything. What the applicants are proposing, I think would, in a variety of different ways, um, and would in such a way that. A big investment would not be made into the subject property that would maybe have to be thrown away. For the use to be adapted in the future, therefore maybe, um, providing some hindrance. To somebody being willing to do something, again, I'd say more substantial there in the future, I think it's a good placeholder. For some period of time before, maybe market conditions or other things are, are such that we'd see something different here. I kinda wanna leave just maybe more of a description about the proposed site improvements and what the applicants wanna do. And that sort of a thing to them, um, do you have any questions for me, maybe before we let them?
I, I do remember discussing this.
We did, yeah, it's been a little while.
In my recollection was, there was general support, um, of the commission. What I'm fuzzy on is, was it just a discussion and just kind of, um, looking at the possible concept? And then they went back and are working with you all to find what mechanism the city has that would make this work, is that correct?
I think you said that very well.
Okay.
Okay, my question is if, I, I like this slide here, so this is the, this is the river. And then the trail goes along this side of the river, is that?
On the other side, uh-huh.
On the other side, and so, and this is all wooded here, there's trees all along here, is that correct?
It's pretty substantial, yeah, it's a.
Yeah, okay, and then, um, and then this property. How does it, what's its elevation compared to, like, these guys are down off the hill? Are these on, up on the hill, or does this go down into? How, how does the height compare to the houses?
Map for a quick second, just. I know what my perception is, let's see if I'm right about, you, you know better than I do. I think this site's lower than the homes to the west.
Uh, yeah, so, well, so it, so the homes to the back, those six homes.
Nick, remind me your last name.
Okay, so, so the Ace Rents where you can see that we're squared in right there, going directly to the east. It is the same elevation as Ace Rents, right there, yep. So on the top, so, oh, so you're talking, that, it drops down like twenty feet back to the residential back there.
That's my question.
And so that thousand foot long fence right there on the property line, right there on the edge, yeah, that would be a six foot wall precast.
And then it drops, and then these guys drop down?
Uh, incorrect, it's all the same elevation.
Oh, these guys and these guys.
Yeah, that, yep, yep, all that's the same, where the elevation comes up is up top.
Up here?
Yep.
Oh, it drops?
Nope, nope, to the right, to the right, keep going, keep going, right there, that's the higher elevation, so that's six thousand. Or four thousand six hundred and two, and it drops, uh, to forty. See that drop, it, it drops off the hill.
Right here.
Yeah, right there.
Gotcha, oh, this drop, okay.
Yeah, that's a major drop right there, yeah.
Okay, so, do we have any questions for, do you have anything else to tell us about, and do we have any questions for you? Commissioners, any questions for Dade?
So, just to restate, the, the front, or at least what I'm seeing along there, there are some improvements. But it's, looks like most of the changes are actually happening within the property, deep within the property, not along Arrowhead Trail.
Yes, uh, the, um, I'd say most significant improvements, this image shows it well, right out here. Pretty intense landscaping and they're simply meeting our landscape requirements there. The same along the single family homes over here, where there'll be a wall installed, there'll be trees planted. We require one tree for every thirty lineal feet that, um. They share, you know, as a boundary with those homes, uh, on that side of the property line. Um, beyond those things, which I, I think those are improvements that will stand, that, you know, test of time. They'd be required regardless of the use that's here, most of the other things that would be talked about by way of improvements. Be maybe more temporary in nature.
I appreciate that, that'll be nice from the road as well, improving that area, that's really nice. Okay, this is, I think the applicant has an applicant, couldn't we, would, would you like to come speak with us? Okay, restate your name?
My name's Nick Last, uh, so realistically. So that's my grandpa, that's Grandpa Sid, uh, he, he's the property owner of it all and. Uh, he is Ace Rents, we've been in business for seventy years, we've been at this location since nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, we pretty much utilized, uh, two acres of our property for Ace Rents and, uh. We just have, there's, there's like nine acres sitting there not being used kinda. And, uh, we just kinda started scratching our heads one day on if we could, you know, kinda utilize it and do something with it. With being in rental and, uh, dealing with landscapers and, you know, renting skid steers and trenchers and stuff. We had people ask all the time, like, where to get dec- decorative rock, a lot of people are dry escaping, there's just, there. Grass is going away, water's getting less, and a lot of people are going more dry escape, real pretty rock and stuff like that, so. Demand for us, customer wise, has just kinda came, went up a little bit. And we got to thinking one day and it's like, well, maybe we can go ask permission from the city. To see if we can use, you know, some more of our property since we're already paying, uh, C two commercial property tax on the whole thing. But we're only using two acres of the twelve. You know, so there's a couple different things that come in, it's just a, it's like an idea, and, uh, so I just. So it's just kinda like a little landscape yard with ba-, I, I don't know, I'm sure almost everyone here has been into like a landscape yard, but. You know, it's, the beauty of it is, we're gonna clean up the front of the property, make it look a lot better off, you know, Arrowhead. I've talked to all six neighbors in person, five of them said, love it. They thought with the sewer main going through our property, that it was gonna be multifamily homes going back there. And when I said, no, well, for now, no, like, we're not selling it for now. They were ecstatic, uh, of something like this, like, it's being cleaned up, we're gonna, you know, we're actually gonna use it. Uh, it's gonna be a pretty wall up against there, you know, all the neighbors. Uh, they still have all the great big trees up against the river, there's still the ten foot berm, none of that will be touched, like, from the river. To the, you know, that hundred, two hundred feet won't even be disturbed, I mean, that's all just pretty. And in my opinion, like, could it be cleaned up, yes, which that's what I'm gonna do, but. Anyways, it's just realistically, it's removable bays that are like precast blocks. You can set it up and you can tear the whole thing down in a snap of a finger, so nothing is permanent. It's more of, you know, we're just, uh, meeting more customer needs, an idea that we had and, uh. Yeah, I'm not really good at this, so, sorry.
I think you've given a great description there, it sounds like you've got property you're just not using. You're improving the frontage.
Exactly, exactly, we, we wanna make it pretty, we wanna be within code standards, I'm more than happy to go throw, you know, a, a good amount of my, those. That wall is a crazy expense, quarter million for that back wall, but. You gotta invest, you know, to get something out, it's gonna be dulling the whole property up, we're gonna be able to utilize. You know, our property a little bit more and.
Those individuals you talked with were, were along that wall, I assume.
Yes, so, uh, the five neighbors that live there loved it, the sixth wanted to buy the property. Always gonna, you know, always gonna have that, uh, I was actually hoping some of them would show up because they were. Really happy just to hear that it wasn't multifamily homes going back there with that sewer main being ran through our property. Uh, again, it's a, it's a set up tear down thing, it's nothing per, there's, the landscape, all that will be permanent, obviously. I mean, until, you know, down the road and, you know, whatever grandpa wants to do with it, but. Uh, you know, for now, it was, it's just, and, and honestly, these pictures that I found, they're, these are, they're kinda ugly, like. I don't know if you've been to our shop, but we keep pretty tidy, uh, we have high expectations of cleanliness and everything else and. I've got dust control figured out, we're gonna bring in crushed asphalt and cap everything really nicely. Uh, I, I, all the neighbors have my email, my cellphone number, everything, if there's ever a problem, like. I'm not here to be a bad neighbor, like, we never have been, we never will be, uh. Just, just wanting to use a little bit more of that property.
Yeah, that was my only question for you, was dust mitigation?
And we rent those water trucks, water trailer, like, we're, we're in rental, so we already have all this stuff laying around. And so that's another reason why, like, that little light bulb went off of, you know. Put in some bays, sell some rock, you know, make more clients happy, customers, so on and so forth and, uh. Crushed asphalt is a big thing, they mill it up, and then you go on a hot day and, and, uh, grade it out and compact it. And it's almost dustless, uh, it's pretty, crushed asphalt or chewed up asphalt's pretty incredible, it's like a good road base also. Uh, that was my biggest concern because again, I wouldn't want dust being stirred up back there. A good thing about decorative rock and this high end landscape rock is ninety-nine percent of it's washed from the pit. So when it comes out of trucks and stuff, it doesn't have a whole bunch of, of dust in it because. It's that high end of rock, like your whites, your lava rock, I mean, I could go into major detail, but a lot of the new rock that everybody likes is. It's all washed and it's very nice stuff, will there be dust at times, I guarantee it, I prompt, like, I'd be lying to you if I said. There won't be, do I have the capability and the knowledge and everything else to take care of it when I know I need to? Absolutely I do, absolutely, and we will be running water and everything back to those trees. And so I will have water in multiple places, uh, we're gonna tap into the. Twelve inch PI line out in front of our store there, and we're gonna come off of the culinary. So we're gonna take our sprinkler system off culinary water and tap into the PI. And hook all of our sprinklers up into that brand new PI you guys just ran right in front of our store. And get it metered and everything and, you know, kinda update things as we're going. Because like I said, it's been there since ninety-eight, it's a little old school, if you know what I mean, so.
Well, thank you.
Kinda updating things.
Thank you, Nick, appreciate that. Okay, that was, uh, oh, we have a public hearing, uh, we will. Uh, move into public hearing, is there anyone that would like to come and, uh, and comment, you have three minutes? And, yep, and if you'll stay, it, uh, if you'll state your name and.
Uh, my name's Chris Papworth, um, I'm a contractor, I do a lot of work in the area. Um, we also supply these yards, uh, with one of my businesses and so. I've known Nick for a long time, um, and the family. And so I just wanted to show up and, and just show my support with it, I think, um. The good thing about their plan is they can bring it in in bigger trucks, which will bring the cost down. So when I look at the last, you know, property trying to be approved with the smaller lots, I think. Things are really expensive due to spending and, and we can get into all that, I don't want to. But I do have kids that are married, buying houses, they can't afford a big lot, they're gonna have to have a small lot. They're gonna have to put in their own yard, and so, next plan, I support it, you know, bringing it in in volume. And trying to let the customers of Springville and, and Spanish Fork and Mapleton and Salem, you know. Come, come into Spanish Fork, get their materials, put in their own yards, um. So it is a successful business model and I think there will be success, I think your community is gonna really appreciate it. So, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Alright, so. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and, uh, any discussion?
I, I like everything I've seen here, I like the improvements in, uh, in front of our head. Um, an additional use for the property, it seems great, the fence sounds good. Seems like, like some good work that's been put in here and I like what I'm seeing, I think we should, uh. I think we should, uh, favorably approve this, so.
Well, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll propose a motion that we approve the conditional use approval, uh, for Ace Rental Landscape Yard. We, that the applicant has meets the city's development and construction standards and that the applicant adheres to the site improvement proposed in the submit plan, submitted plans.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for wanting to do that, right? For making a great investment in our community. Thanks for being a great part of our wonderful community.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good one. Okay, our next. Okay, our next item is annexations. And the annexations, I don't see that this is public hearing. Is this just a approval? Annexations go to the city council, but it just isn't a public hearing. Okay.
Yes, so here we have the Creekside Annexation. You guys might be familiar with that name based off of our last meeting. So, this, just like that development, located at 1527 South Main Street. And this contains 0.32 acres, less than half an acre. Before I go into details with this one specifically, the other two annexations, so all three total, are working under the same mechanism essentially. So, I'll just give you some background so we don't have to bring it up for each one. If you go to the next slide, this is our annexation policy plan map. You guys have seen that before. All the annexations will fall within that. If you go to the next one, this is our growth boundary. Once again, all these annexations fall within that. In this annexation, along with the other two, are all being done by resolution, not by petition. So, that means that rather than a landowner petitioning the city to annex them, if the property meets certain criteria that are set out in State Code 10218, then the city council can adopt a resolution to annex them. Some of those criteria are that it is an unincorporated island or peninsula of Utah County. It must be less than 50 acres, has to have less than 800 residents, and it must be served by some municipal service for at least a year. All of these annexations meet that criteria. So, they can all be done by resolution. So, that process involves the council initiating the resolution to annex the subject property, which for all three of these, they initiated that process on May 6, 2025. And then at least 30 days later, the resolution has to return to the city council in the form of a public hearing to be voted on with the acceptance of the zoning as well. So, we're bringing these to you today so that way you guys can kind of have your say on the zoning for these properties, or for these annexations when they get incorporated. So, with that being said, if you go forward a couple, oh, this is the part of State Code. Just updated it. This is the Creekside Development that you guys saw. And then if you go to the next one, yeah. So, essentially this, the, the parcel that the Creekside Development is on, we noticed through the review process, that part of the parcel actually extends beyond the city boundaries. The city boundary comes right here, but the parcel goes outside of it. So, we need to annex that in order to designate zoning to it. So, that's what this is. It's essentially just a cleanup. So, staff is recommending that the R4 residential zone be designated to this in order to, order to match the rest of the Creekside Development. Any questions? Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense. I have questions.
Yes.
Okay, so this is owned by the Creekside developers?
Yeah.
Owners?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not yet.
Oh, not yet. Not yet.
This is actually a city-owned property that we've agreed to trade with the Creekside developers for some other space in their project.
Oh, good to know. And is this, so along here is the river and the trail. So, when I was riding my bike along here last week, I was looking and noticed that there is a fence and that belonged, the fenced, that, it's kind of goes from wider to skinnier. That's owned by Mr. McKell, correct? And that's not in the city?
Most likely it, you know, I'm trying to picture what you're describing. I think most of that through there is owned by Mr. McKell.
Okay. Which would make sense, the way it's fenced.
In the city today.
Not in the city today. Okay. But this, does this, it looks to me like this little diamond is, crosses the river?
Yeah. And if you go to the general plan one, it shows it pretty well. Yeah, so most of it sits within the river corridor. And I don't believe that any units were planned to be within this parcel. I think it's really just a cleanup essentially of the boundary. So, it makes sense.
It's another state champion? It's in all, every?
We only wish. That is such a strange, to me, that is such a strange little thing, diamond, because it goes across the river. But that's part of the parcel?
Yeah, it's part of the parcel.
That's part of the?
It's very odd to have a, one parcel.
It's a third of an acre.
Either in or outside of the city, that the city boundary runs through. This caught us by surprise and we had actually done, I think, a couple of reviews on the Creekside project before somebody in our engineering office pointed out that this was the case. So, we kinda put it into high gear then to get the annexation underway. Unfortunately, you know, meets the criteria that Ian was talking about in terms of being eligible to be approved by resolution, which is a little bit quicker, so.
Okay, so the parcel, I'm looking now at this, the parcel goes like that.
The parcel goes like that, exactly, yep.
Okay, and this is all in the city and this is not?
Yeah, everything within the red here is not.
That's the only portion of the parcel that's not in the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, maybe 90% of the parcel is in the city?
That makes way more sense to me now.
It's a strange anomaly that it seems like we should correct.
It is a strange parcel, yeah. Well, and the parcel is strange too because of where it goes across the river like that.
Right.
Okay, all right. What's the next thing we're supposed to do here? Discussion? Discussion. It makes sense to me that we would just clean it up, move to approve and clean it up?
Yeah. The owner being the city who is going to trade this with the developer. It seems like we all
Right.
have fairly a uniform agreement on what we're doing here.
All right, then, should I entertain a motion? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the Creekside Annexation.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Do they need to specify the zoning that they want with it?
Yeah, if we can clearly.
Was that your intent?
Yes, that was my intent.
It's part of the motion to recommend that the council annex the property with R4 zoning?
R4 zoning, yes.
I thought I heard that.
Okay, all right, Mr. Bunker, next.
Okay.
One.
Gonna go through all three of these. So, this one, this is the Johnson Yowd Annexation. So, this one's located at 300 West, 1600 North. And this one is a little bit bigger, 18 and a half acres roughly. So, this one's also being done by resolution, like I said, as it's a large, unincorporated island of Utah County that sits within Spanish Fork City. So, it meets the criteria as long, as well as the other things that I mentioned before. Has no zoning, obviously. The general plan designation for it though, is entirely industrial. So, the Development Review Committee first saw this on March 5. And it was discussed that this annexation could incorporate with the I-1 Light Industrial Zone since the general plan designation is industrial and the surrounding development is industrial. And I believe, don't wanna speak at all for the landowners, they had discussed developing industrially as well in the future. However, when we discussed this, the DRC discussed this again on April 30, it was decided that it should be designated RR Rural Residential upon incorporation. And staff thinks that just because we haven't seen any development plans for it yet. So, if it comes in as RR, you guys will get to see the zone change and thus any plating before it, you know, anything gets approved. So, it kind of just gives you guys another bite at the apple, essentially. And yeah, fairly straightforward again. Staff is recommending approval of this annexation with the RR Rural Residential zoning.
So, what's the current land use?
The current?
What are, what's the current use of the?
I think it's just agricultural.
Agricultural, yeah. Okay.
Really vacant land today.
Great.
Just out of curiosity, do we have a lot of islands like this in Spanish Fork? No, okay. Yeah, it just is interesting that that happens.
I think we have one other island.
One other island. Okay.
So, the main reason to do rural residential instead of industrial. I guess rural residential, if I look up there, maybe the coloring isn't clear. This is the light industrial right here and this is rural, oh no, those are little small rural.
Yeah, that's a little small and all of this, yeah, is light industrial. This is actually a little bit of I-2, it looks like. This is all light industrial. But yeah, the point would be because a zone change will bring any future plating and plans back to you guys. That way you guys have some say on the zone change
Gotcha.
in the future. Otherwise, if you guys designate it I-1 Light Industrial now, then it's, the zoning's already in place essentially. So, it won't, it doesn't have to come.
Yeah, I guess that makes sense. I mean, it's, it's more administrative function if we get to that point. But right now, there's nothing going on there, so.
Yeah.
We'll see some sort of administrative function there.
What was the discussion like with the landowners?
It was good. I mean, they talked about, I, I believe they talked about how they'd like to see it develop industrial in the future as well.
They don't, they don't object to being in the city? And it's just a strange anomaly that they're not, like, they, they weren't the kind of people that are like, I'm never gonna be part of the city.
They're requesting they come to the city.
This is in response to their request, this proposal, the property owners.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they see development in the future, but they're not anxious and so they weren't opposed to RR.
I see.
I think also, Josh, if you could go forward a few, I should probably clarify this as well. So, it's actually not the entire island. I should, I should probably bring that up. It's just a portion of the island that's going to be
Annexed?
Annexed, it's not the whole thing.
What? Why are we not? I saw that and I forgot that, that was one of my concerns.
Yeah.
Why are, why are we not annexing the whole thing?
The other property owners do not want to be annexed.
So, they are the?
Yeah.
So, we're creating two more islands?
Yeah. Smaller islands though, which is allowed in State Code.
Okay. So, and they, the, and these property owners did apply?
Correct.
So, this isn't just by?
It is by resolution. They, they did apply, but then under State Code, it's a
It fits under the?
Slightly easier process for everybody essentially, if it's done by resolution and this meets the criteria to do it by resolution. So, essentially, we just, yeah, doing it by resolution.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
May I comment just one more step on the zoning? Like, from my perspective, having this property zoned industrial now, it's no concern at all. And it would, you know, maybe avoid a step in the future that might not do a lot of good. Except that there are some pretty unique challenges with this property and, and getting certain services to it. The biggest one's a road. And I think we have some challenges that need to be worked through before the property develops. And particularly for that reason, I do think it's a good idea for the city, by way of the city looking out for its best interests to keep that zoning card still in hand until we're able to work through a proposed site plan and make sure that everybody's on the same page about what's required when the property develops. And then, you know, we talk about that legislative act with the zone change. So, not a concern with use, but more a concern with how we get a road into the property and some things like that.
Gotcha, okay. All right, any, any more discussion? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the, or that we recommend approval of Johnson, the Johnson Yowd Annexation. And that this be annexed into the city with the RR Rural Residential zoning.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes to the city council favorably. Okay, all right, Mr. Bunker Peterson, River Bottoms Road Annexation.
Okay. Last one. So, yeah, this is the River Bottoms Road Annexation, located at approximately 860 South River Bottoms Road. And this one is a tiny bit over four acres in size. This is also being done by resolution because this one is a part of a larger peninsula here where the boundary kinda lose it up here, but it somewhat follows this. So, part of a peninsula, unincorporated Utah County, so it can be done by resolution. The general plan designation for this one is medium and high-density residential. This is very similar to the Creekside one, from the perspective that it's, a portion of it, at least, is a part of another development, which is kind of was the reason why we needed to annex it in the first place. It's a part of the River Run subdivision. And there were some, I believe it's just the road improvements that are the, the piece of this. So, need to annex it into the city in order for that to be all cleaned up. If you go to the next couple slides, so this is an old version of the plat that we got back in November. As you can see here, it just is the right-of-way. There aren't any adjacent property owners a part of this. But then if you go to the next slide, Josh, this is the now-current version. The, this adjacent property owner, I believe it's the Olsons, has decided to be a part of the annexation as well. And shout out to Travis for making this plat and kinda navigating some of these tricky property lines here. He did it by occupation, so where it looked like people were occupying the space. Those were kind of the lines that he chose here for their prop, for their parcels in the annexation. So, they'll be a part of it as well, which means that we kind of have two different zoning recommendations as a part of this. The first one being that the right-of-way is zoned R3 to match what's happening in the River Run subdivision across the street. But then the second part is to have the remaining parcels zoned RR Rural Residential, just because, once again, they have no development plans, they're just are annexing into the city with this. So, they could come in as RR. But yeah, does that make sense?
Does, do the Johnsons already have, what kind of city utilities are already, city utilities and services are already available to the Johnsons? Or are they going to now start receiving city services and utilities?
I think it was Electric City?
They would need to be annexed to be able to make use of city services. Now that the property just across River Bottoms Road is developed, they're readily accessible. So, we'd welcome anybody along there that would like to be annexed to do so and we're ready to serve them. I think actually our engineering folks talked to some other property owners along here as well about potentially annexing and they declined at this point in time. But in my mind, that's, that's a big reason to feel like it's time, you know, to annex them.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? To this? Seems pretty straightforward to me. All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the Peterson River Bottoms Road Annexation be recommended for approval to city council with the R3 and RR zoning. with the R three and RR zoning.
As designated.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passes. Moves on to city council. Okay, thanks everyone, your patience for how to run a meeting. I've been coming here for a long time, but not paid attention very hard to how to conduct the meeting. All right, we have number seven, construction standards. This is exciting! To the engineers. Hey, I, I also have to say thank you for giving us a really good summary at the top.
Yeah, that's, I'll go through the summary.
Yes.
And then we can dive into whatever you want to look at. Um, so to start out first, just some clarifications on our storm drain and LID, so our low impact development requirements. Uh, we were getting some questions by developers on, um, when to use those, and then a little bit further down, when to use like a twenty-five year, a hundred year storm, for their storm drain calculations. So those are what, uh, what's being cleaned up there. Um, tried, cleaned up some of the wording, took out a little bit of the LID background information of types of the LID that we don't really use in the city, so just kind of clear up, uh, those things there. Uh, the storm drain video inspection section, uh, we've updated that to put that on the contractor when, uh, during construction rather than having the city do it and then them pay us back. Uh, bedding material for water lines, that's just a little bit, just added water lines into our bedding material section. Um, I think the, the rainfall runoff method, we kind of touched on that, but we added the data, um, for the hundred year storm into the standard, so that that's readily accessible and a little bit more clear on when they should be using that for design. Uh, added a section on temporary all-weather roadways. Um, if you remember back, we kind of talked a bit about that at Whispering Pines Development, just wanted to clear that up of what's acceptable for the city for an all-weather roadway and make sure that when they're putting that in, it's going to be something that will last and last through the winter. Um, our commercial meters, the updates there are mostly electrical, uh, updating to meet some electrical standards that have changed for our meters. Um, and then something that may have changed, if you looked at this earlier, the section on backflow protection. We originally were thinking about adding that into our standard section and removing it from, uh, municipal code. But talking to public works director and water department this morning, rather than kind of have it in two places, we thought better here to just reference our municipal code since that has a little bit more teeth on enforcing. Um, and then drawings, just, most of those are cleanups. Uh, one of the main things that was added, the state's added a requirement for tracer wire to be added to our water lines. And so a lot of the, uh, updates to those drawings are just adding that detail of how contractors can add that in, so. I don't know if there's any questions now, or if we just kind of want to slowly scroll through if something pops out, but.
I have a couple, a couple, if you'll scroll back up. Uh, and maybe I'll go through this as we're going through, but I'd love to have like the, the, the short version for all the people that watch this recording later, citizens that would like to know what, what are, uh, what is LID? Like, what, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so LID is short for low impact development, and it's kind of a concept that came around uh, for how to handle stormwater runoff. And so traditionally, stormwater, rainwater, fall in the roads, fall into parking lots, we'd collect that in the catch basins and then just send it uh, via pipes to Utah Lake or Spanish Fork River. Um, the ideas behind LID is that we take that water and rather than just send it straight to Utah Lake, we try and put that back into the ground so that it can recharge the aquifer, the groundwater, um, receive some treatment by doing so, and then we're not directly just discharging it straight to Utah Lake, but it's kind of recharging the groundwater within the community. Um, and the approach that we take here at the city is generally, um, kind of underground chambers. There's different models and different manufacturers of that, but you'll still see your inlet in the roadway, it will collect the groundwater, and then rather than going through pipes down to the river, gets into an underground chamber that's buried, um, surrounded by gravel. And that way the water can just kind of percolate back into the ground. Um, so it's, uh.
Chambers like a big container that has holes in it, so it can.
Yeah, kind of like a big, if you've seen like the fifty-five gallon plastic barrels, that's smaller version, if you think of kind of cutting that in half and having holes in it and then filling with gravel. Uh, that's kind of what those are, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you want to just kind of scroll through, Ian? So you can see those. Um, so here, yeah, right up front. Uh, just kind of wording updates on our storm drain, nothing too beefy up front there. Um, you can see where we added water lines to our fill material.
Ask me a question about that, about the contractor doing it. Um, do they, do, so, so they're, uh, uh, once they've approved that or whatever, do they document this, or, or what do they do?
Yeah, they'll, so they can just send, um, little robot camera down the pipe, which records a video. Uh, then, once they get that, they'll have their people inspect it, we'll have ours take a look at it. And if we see anything wrong with how they installed the storm drain, or if something was damaged while they were doing other construction, it just gives us a chance to have them replace that.
Okay, so we, we, we're still providing oversight under that.
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, we, we still are, we're just not, um, using our own equipment to go out and do every single pipe.
But we're still.
Being installed.
Doing what they've done.
Still part of our inspection, right, and approval. Uh, here's, yeah, a section on our low impact, uh, development, uh, mostly some cleanup stuff there. Uh, updating a lot of that to be underground. Uh, some low impact development practices could include uh, like a vegetated swell or, uh, retention ponds. We do some of that, but we kind of stick to only doing that in areas that are master planned. Um, just because they're effective, but they take a lot more maintenance. Um, and so over time, we found that those can clog up or not be maintained or become unsightly, so generally we'll stick to just using underground type LID. Uh, this here is just cleaning up kind of some general information, not really related to how we want things constructed, but just more background information on LID in general. Um, kind of more of the same, but as it relates to drainage and storm drain reports that they'll be submitting during design. Uh, this here, design storms, getting into where we cleaned up the language a little bit about when we would use a twenty-five year frequency storm versus a hundred year frequency storm, which is a little bit bigger. Um, just helping clean up that language there. This is more design stuff. There you can just see the, we put the information there for the hundred year design storm about what intensity of rainfall they should be using, just so they don't have to go look that up. Just a little bit more cleanup there, differentiating between when we use those storms. And then references to our details, just so that it's clear. Uh, that there, this is our temporary all-weather roadway section that we've added, so if you scroll down just a little bit, uh, talks about, you know, either a rock surface, uh, road milling or kind of that crushed asphalt that we were talking about earlier, or just a regular asphalt road. So we'll accept for that. Uh, just the update there for electrical changes. And then this is our backflow, what I was talking about, um, just a reference to municipal code. And then drawings, a lot of these are just little notes, uh, that we've through experience with construction, felt like we should add to help get a better product. Uh, just extra support there. Um, and then getting into just adding our tracer wire to our details. So these are details that have existed. We're just showing how the contractor should install that tracer wire, which is just wire that they can take a, um, utility locator above ground, sends a signal down and that wire, as it's energized, will send a signal back to help us locate those utilities.
Isn't that fairly low cost to?
Yeah, it's not, it's not too much to, to add. But they, if it's installed incorrectly, can mess things up, so important to have in our details. Again, these are kind of more of the same, just different situations, manholes versus vaults versus meter boxes. I think that about covers it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is great.
Yeah, it'll be good to have.
It's exciting, it's exciting to some people, it's needful and helpful to our city, so thank you.
Helpful for us, for sure.
Appreciate the, the great work and the detail you go into making things run well in our city.
Absolutely.
Alrighty. Um, any, uh, questions, any comments, any discussion on the construction standards revisions? Brandon, Dave?
It is, uh, scheduled for a public hearing. We didn't note it on the agenda that way, but.
Oh, yes, public hearing? Okay.
The formality of.
Oh, great. Okay, well, let's go into public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the construction standards revisions that are proposed?
Yeah.
Seeing none.
Downstairs and try to find somebody.
Right. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing and, uh, I'd entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
I move that we recommend approval of the updated ordinance and, ordinance and, and construction standards revisions, twenty-five oh one.
We have a motion, do we have a second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that will pass to the city council. All right. Mr. Anderson, we have on our agenda a number eight, uh, concept reviews. You've indicated that we will not be having those this evening, is that right?
We effectively got stood up, so apologize.
You know.
Groups might be back in the future, but the other one has sold their project, so.
Okay.
They no longer want your time.
It's nice to have concept reviews when there's more of us here too.
Yeah.
I think, so, that's great. All right, our last item, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose that?
Got to make sure that's unanimous.
That is unanimous, unanimous.